I'm gonna call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo. Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow. And councillor Pictionaryary.
I'm here, thank you.
All right, and councillor Woodrow's excused for the evening, we are expecting councillor Mo any minute now. We have two items tonight, the first item is the planning commission interviews. And I believe Sandy, you're here to do the staff work.
Good evening, mayor and councillors, my name is Sandy Belson, I'm the comprehensive planning manager. So tonight we have five people who have applied to be on the planning commission to fill two vacancies. We also have two members of the commission whose terms will expire in February. So you could, if you wanted, decide to appoint those positions out of this applicant pool, or you could direct staff to recruit again this fall for additional applicants to fill those two positions that would be available in February. There are no applicants who are outside of the city limits or who are involved in the real estate profession. So there is no restriction on who you need to appoint, or who you could appoint.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I have a question, Sandy, I think it said in the packet that one of those folks who's up in 2023 is not planning to reapply, but one of them, it didn't say that they were not planning to reapply. So what do we do about that?
Commissioner Quavilla is finishing his second term, so he is not eligible to reapply.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I think we're ready unless there's more questions to do the interviews. Okay. Hello, Ruth.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us. I would go around and do introductions, but it's gonna be a little bit hard with everybody in the room, so we're all here.
Okay.
If, I'm gonna ask the questions and then everybody's gonna take notes, and if you're ready to go, I'll start firing them away.
Okay.
Why are you interested in serving on the planning commission?
From my years of experience as a transit planner and community advocate, I just love working with groups that are trying to accomplish big, big things that have great impact. And this planning commission is such a great tie between what the state is wanting to see down at the local level. And as a citizen advisory committee, I would love to be participating in understanding what changes are coming down and how to best support the city council in understanding those impacts on citizens, as well as how to maybe make some recommendations for some best approaches and learn along the way.
All right, great, could you describe your understanding of the role you will have serving on planning commission and how it relates to the work of council?
I basically will be a citizen that is gonna learn what the legislative rules and regulations are, and how that's gonna impact land use and some regulations. And as citizens, bring their projects or industries to the city council. I'm going to be a layer of advisory, learning what their project is, asking questions, and also giving some feedback on how that might have some negative or positive impacts on the community as I'm understanding the regional plan is set up and what the codes and land use guidelines are, and make sure we're all lining up and implementing them as appropriately as possible.
What do you see as current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
Well, we've got some growth issues, and along the way, there's requirements for how buildings have to be built and also transportation. Modes are having more of an impact on our community's ability to grow for transit and for business development. I'm really concerned that we have as much of a livable community that has all the components of of industry as well as neighborhoods that have viability and an infrastructure that's in place that can support us into the future. And I've lived in this town for 25 years and it's grown, and I think there's been some great approaches in the past to grow and some smart moves that have made us very different from Eugene. And I want as much as possible to support that and help us meet as many goals as possible.
All right, before we let you go, do you have any questions for me? Or the rest of us?
I basically wanna know if we're how much we're gonna challenge what was asked of our community to implement the legislative environmental restrictions, especially around buildings.
Oh, that's gonna be a longer conversation. Litigation right now, so you'll have to hear a little bit more about it later. But if you stick around for the update, they're gonna talk about what is actually in the rules.
Oh, great, great, well, I look forward to working with all of you if you choose me.
All right, thank you so much, Ruth. If somebody from the staff's gonna get back to you with what our decision is.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then why don't you come over here?
Why can't Cynthia, is Cynthia good to come down? Cynthia, can you hear us okay? Well, welcome, so I'm the mayor and I I realized how hard it was gonna be to do introductions while we're in here, so it's nice, on behalf of the council, it's really nice to meet you. I will ask the questions for everybody, and then we'll, then we'll discuss from there. Why are you interested in serving on the planning commission?
Well, I did a lot of student work and physical work and planning.
Yeah, could you, hang on one second. Is there, is there a mic, it's still, it's a little bit.
Then actually, if you, you know, come a little closer to here.
Cynthia.
You're talking.
Yeah, we may end up having.
Quiet voice.
Okay, I've shown a lot of sort of planning work and assessment work and evaluation.
Yeah, I think so, okay. Cynthia, could, we're gonna actually have you come, come down to the chambers and use the microphone in here.
Okay.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Okay. I'll bring her down, maybe you can start the next interview and by that time we'll be done there, okay?
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great.
We have councillor Pictionaryary in the room, so, you know, he's being pretty feisty. So, welcome Stephen, if you're ready, I'm gonna go ahead and start asking the questions. I'm gonna ask all the questions tonight, just to make it a little bit easier in the remote setting.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, if you can hear me okay?
Yep. Why are you interested in serving on the planning commission?
It's a way for me to, to help out and then inform myself of what, you know, what's going on in the city and what challenges there are and how they're being addressed. And I know you guys ask for a lot of outreach, or do a lot of outreach, ask for a lot of input, and I know folks don't. So it's just an opportunity for me to try to help out and try to let you know what I'm thinking and hearing, so.
Could you describe your understanding of the role that you will have serving on the planning commission and how it relates to the work of the council?
Well, I don't, I don't know much about planning, only what I've read, of course, I've started reading the metro plan, interesting. I hope I can help the council understand what citizens want and help the citizens, you know, understand the path that the council took, why you did it, what the, you know, issues were. You know, misinformation's the problem, of course, and trying to drive the city, I assume, so.
What do you see as the current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
Public health and safety. Housing stability, that's a big one, obviously Main Street's been out there recently. I think future budgets are gonna be an issue, I'm probably not telling anyone on the council that, so anything with that, so.
All right, do you have any questions for any of us before we let you go?
No, I don't think so, I will comment that I, you know, I voted for land use planning, what was it, 50 years ago? Forty some years ago? My idea was is that things would be orderly, I think, I think that's important, I think it has gotten a little out of hand, and I know you folks deal with that all the time, and I'm just hoping to be able to understand that and help out. I don't think it has to be a cookie cutter for every community, so appreciate your opportunity to, my opportunity to apply and for all your service, I know you folks put in a lot of time, thank you.
Right, thank you so much, we've got a couple more interviews tonight, so once we deliberate and decide, somebody from the staff will reach out, so thank you. All right, nice. Come on up Cynthia, thank you for being flexible, technology sometimes isn't as.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Why aren't you interested in serving on planning commission?
Well, to have a greater, a greater impact and effect on the community. I've been working some with the homeless for quite a few years and have been helping with with develop programs and develop distribution, and the big issue right now is shelter. Of course, everyone's working on shelters. But, but the idea of the planning commission itself is something besides the police and besides the church fathers, you know? It's just another governing body that has, has impact and influence.
Okay, could you describe your understanding of the role that you will serve on the planning commission and how it relates to the work of council?
Community liaison. You know, interviews, visits, I don't, I haven't ever used a computer much because I live in a really remote fashion with woodstoves and, and hand making and home babies and all of that. So, so my emphasis, of course, is on reaching more people that don't have any access. You know, and with council, council, there's just nothing, nothing presented. That we try to get to a meeting and they say it's over here and that's at this time. And instead, it's over here and it's at this time. You know, without having email and computerization and iPhones. It's just a world apart from what it's always been. I've lived here for nearly 40 years.
What do you see as your current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
The city of Springfield being between McKenzie and Eugene is the most challenging, challenging position probably in the county, maybe in the state, because it's worlds apart. You know, not just McKenzie but Markola and Crow and Fall Creek where people still live, you know exactly the same way they always did, but now have no access, you know, are just blocked off.
Great, do you have any questions for us before we let you go?
Oh, if you have any planning for the shelter, shelter system this winter? If you've considered it?
Yeah, there, there's annual work going on, a shelter called Egan, which is the shelter in the bill of the emergency shelter in Springfield that would activate with the, if the freezing.
Only 15 or 20 nights a year.
That, that's what's being worked on right now.
It was, and when, when they started the urban renewal programs, you know, they said every time a house or unit was torn down, two or three more would have to be built up.
I don't know that I remember that conversation, but if you wanna hang out until, you know, after the meeting, I'm sure we can find somebody to.
But we can apply that to things like the Salvation Army and the Mission and just replace the facilities.
We, we've got a couple more interviews tonight, but like, you're more than welcome to hang out and we can chat with you later, thank you. All right, the next person, please. Hello Seth.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you hear us okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna ask the questions tonight, normally, we would go around with a round of introductions, but we realize, I realized that that's gonna be challenging with us all sitting in the same room, you won't even know who's talking to you, so I'm gonna welcome you on behalf of everybody. Why are you interested in serving on the planning commission?
Yeah, so I'm interested in serving on the planning commission because I frankly feel that I could have a positive impact in my professional background. I've served as a land use planner for Marion County and Lane County, where I administered land use decisions that promoted business developments, economic growth, agricultural operations, and increased housing opportunities. I've been honored to serve four Oregon cities, two counties, and two state agencies in both professional and volunteer roles in land use planning and economic development. I currently serve on the community development advisor committee for the city of Springfield, so I'm an avid civic volunteer. As he's serving on the Springfield Planning Committee, was another opportunity to be more involved with the city's success. I was born and raised in Springfield and want to give back to the city, so that's why I'm here, thank you.
Could you describe your understanding of the role you will have serving on the planning commission and how it relates to the work on council?
Sure, so based on my review, I would assist with making recommendations to the city council concerning legislative adoption or amendments of land use plans and land use regulations in accordance with state law, obviously. Assistant making land use decisions on quasi judicial development proposals and serve as the city's committee for citizen involvement.
What do you see as current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
Sure, I would say number one, city level and state level housing affordability. My wife and I recently purchased a home in Springfield, though I was born and raised here in Thurston. Moved around the state quite a bit and ended up coming back to Springfield just because we love the environment here and the fluidity of the city, so I understand the plight of prospective homeowners and also renters, we rented for quite a long time. Houses populations, so providing services both currently without shelter. Land use as a big, big topic, obviously, it's all interconnected, especially with housing affordability, so the impacts of state legislation on land use in Springfield, meaning, now this speaks to the challenging, challenges facing Springfield in regards to how we, how do you build responsibly and in compliance with Oregon's statewide planning goals, while recognizing the limited space we have to work with, so the city's urban growth boundary. Transportation, we've spoken to tonight already, so how do we address upcoming challenges posed by growth within Springfield to accommodate transportation and its needs for citizens, so, for example, public transportation, cars, pedestrian, and even bike infrastructure, those are all big considerations, so basically, how do we deal, and how do we deal intelligently with growth while also accommodating the needs of people who need our help? And they'll do it for me, thank you.
All right, great, do you have any questions for us before we let you go?
Not at this time, it's been great, just, again, I wanna end with, I'm very eager for this opportunity, and I think I do a great job. And I think I have an academic and work background that could be a piece, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, somebody from the staff will let you know, because we still have a couple more interviews tonight. Thanks Seth. What time did we start, do we give him a specific time to show? Okay, so. Yeah, we can start deliberations and then if we see Devin, we'll we'll go from there. Okay, so let's open deliberations and see what, what people are thinking.
There's always the possibility, you know, that Devin's gonna knock our socks off right now. Stephen and Seth seem, Stephen and Seth seem very capable and very qualified.
Joe.
Yeah, I think I agree with Leonard, also like Ruth, I think she's got, shown the ability to look at things holistically as well. So I think we've got those three strong candidates. I wouldn't, I wouldn't oppose Seth by any, by any means, but Steve's a great candidate, I think he's shown that before. So I like Ruth, Steve, and Seth.
All right, Cory.
So it's, I'm just gonna say it out loud, it sounds like we're, we're leaning towards just seating two folks and then waiting to see in the future, which is where I'm at as well. Uh, my two candidates are Seth and Ruth, actually.
Okay. Uh. Steve.
Even and Seth are my picks.
All right, Damian.
So, question, this is the last person, they said they were on the CDAC, and so are we allowing people to be on more than one board or commission? And if so, why?
Or, or I'm gonna tag in Mary Bridget here.
Sure, councillor Pitts, generally, the council and its operating policies recommends that people only serve on one committee, but it's not an absolute requirement, so in this particular case, he's already on the CDAC. If you decided to appoint him, you know, you could ask him about stepping down from CDAC and then reappoint someone there once you open that back up.
All right.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. All right, so I'll say the first person and the last person.
Okay, Ruth and Seth?
Yes.
Okay, Joe.
Actually Damian, I'm very happy you brought that up because that has been a point of contention over the years and has caused some issues. So based on that, I think I would like to see Ruth and Steve on the planning commission, and then we have plenty of time to figure out Seth. We don't have to appoint him tonight, so I think if we appointed Ruth and Steve tonight and then have time to figure out what we're gonna do with Seth and what he wants to do, because he may, he may very well want to stay on CDAC as opposed to the planning commission. So there's no point in moving forward with that appointment if he does, he would rather not decide between the two. But I agree, Damian, it's important to me, I don't think it's appropriate for people to serve on multiple committees, so.
He's a tally, right.
So we have, Steve's got one, two, three, and without Mary Lee here, it's gonna take three to move, move people forward. Seth has one, two, three, probably, depending on what Joe does, three or four, and then Ruth has got three.
Wow.
So like, so. Um, and I, and I could be fine with all three of them, honestly, like if we, if we're, if we're collectively looking, you know, looking at it and saying as a body, we want, we want to appoint all three, that could, that would be fine, but I would think, but if we do that, we need to make it sort of contingent on Seth stepping off of CDAC. In which, which we can do, we can put that, we can make that part of the deal, we can go back and ask him what his preferences.
So all three then? Provided, provided these.
Oh, Damian.
So I guess my first question is just based on feedback I've gotten from different board and commission members, I wonder, one, did he even know that? Because there's a good chance that he might think, okay, well, I'll be on both. Which, I mean, of course, you can definitely see some overlap, and there's a benefit to them talking, but he might not know that he, that, you know, and so that might be something that, that we'll, we'll need to figure out. Two, I, you know, I know that we talked about having, you know, selecting people for the people who are off in February, but as we look to make some small changes, I personally think we should only choose to tonight and then wait until February, because, I mean, there will be some proposed change, and there's some things we need to iron out first. So, yeah, that's just what I think.
So, and, and I'm looking at the chat, did I read that chat correctly, do we have? Okay, do we see Devin in? Okay, so CDAC also has, I believe, a planning commission liaison on it from, from, from that committee. So again, if I, you know, if I had to go down to two, right, then I would say Ruth and Steve. So I, I think if we're, if we're expecting Devin any minute, I think we give her about another two minutes and then see if we, see if they show, and then we can, then we can finalize it.
We don't, we don't know yet that Steve's gonna step down.
Seth.
Seth's on CDAC.
Correct, I.
Okay.
Basically, we liked all three of them, all right, so let's pause for station identification here and see if. Yes. No, I know.
I would ask for something lively at this time of the night.
Yeah, so maybe the first question that we've gotta answer, are people set on two or three folks? I see a couple twos.
Need two now.
We definitely need two now.
The third one is an option when it comes.
Okay, so. All right, we may have to invite this, did you see anybody? All right, so let's do this, AJ, if we're gonna go back out in February, let's contact her and invite her to reapply. Since we've given her a little bit of time and there's more opportunities, and I believe, February? And I would be, when, I would be even comfortable if we just, if she wanted to and just re-sign the current application and just roll it over, like, have her put a new signature and date on it so that she affirms that, like, she still wants to do this. All right, so, let's, let's count, so I've got, for Seth is one, two, three. Well, not for Joe, I have four for Seth, so I have Leonard, Cory, not Joe, Steve, and Damian. And for Steve, I have, I have three for Steve. And three for Ruth, because I'm, yep. All right, so without Mary Lee here, we gotta be at three to, to keep anything, so if we're going with two folks, if you wanted, we have two options here, right, we can, there's. or we have two options here, right, we can, there's more people that are in favor of Seth, but I think we have to make that contingent on him stepping down a CDEC.
Fair enough.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
And then Steve's a yes. And then I'm assuming staff can have that conversation with Seth.
Well, how is Steve more of a yes than Ruth?
Oh, wow, that's a good point. I just happened to write them.
You would have to tiebreaker. We'd have to battle it out.
Okay, does? Anybody? All right, nobody's changing mind, my mind. So I I had Steve over Ruth. So move forward Seth and Steve, please. Yeah.
What's gonna happen if you didn't want to step down for CDEC is Ruth automatically.
Then it's Ruth. I, well, we would settle it. Probably what would happen is at a regular session that we would try, we would settle it, you know, settle it there. And given if nobody's support changes, it would be Ruth because we could, we could have just appointed Ruth to do it. Now, let's let's sort it out after the fact, like if if we figure out, we can sort it out after the fact. All right. Perfect. And then, yeah, that looks like it for planning commission. Second thing, we have Sandy back for overview on CFEC.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Sandy Belson. Now I'm actually in front of you instead of on the screen. I'm your comprehensive planning manager. Uh, so the objective for tonight's work session is to provide a broad overview of administrative rules, which we call CFEC rules, climate-friendly and equitable communities. These were adopted in July and then just published this month. Um, so in this presentation, I'm going to provide some background on the situation that led to the rulemaking process. The legislatively adopted greenhouse gas targets, the general requirements of the rules, various components of the rules, and then an overall timeline.
So hang on one second, Sandy, we're going to switch over to the city attorney's office to give a little bit more background about setting this up.
Um, thank you. This is Christina Kraus, Assistant City Attorney. Um, I provided a privileged memo to the council at the same time as your packet. Um, I think as it's known, Springfield is looking at challenging the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules. Um, and the validity of the specific rules requirements rather than the goals or objectives of the rulemaking. And so the advice of city attorney's office because of timing around lawsuits and how long that process can take and the very, very tight deadlines that these rules provide. We essentially need to move forward with implementation while we're waiting for the rest of the process to work itself out. Um, if the council has any questions about the litigation effort or any of the content of the memo, um, I'm happy to connect with you one-on-one outside of a council meeting, um, since that's a topic of attorney-client privilege. Um, but otherwise, um, the information in this presentation tonight has been vetted through our office. So this is consistent with the city attorney's office's recommendation for, um, starting to move forward on implementation while we're waiting for, you know, maybe other results to come out of our efforts to try to get more flexibility in the legal process.
Leonard.
Um, did any of the other cities that were considering participating in this lawsuit move forward?
Yes, we have eight cities, um, who have joined us and potentially also a county and other cities that have expressed, um, support. Um, but may have not have yet made a formal decision, um, in terms of a public decision to join the litigation, but there are a half dozen more cities that have.
I apologize. Just that in the packet.
No.
It was in the privileged memo that I provided to the council on Thursday.
Yeah, so so the way I would think about this is since these are still rules that are in place today outside of our litigation, that we that we we need to discuss this and talk about how we would implement them since they're still effectively administrative rules.
Correct. The rules are, um, in place and effective and there are deadlines that are rapidly approaching.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have questions about that? Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Thank you, that packet you sent out. I guess. Yeah. I can't comment too much on some of it, but I just want to tell you, I appreciate the work that you put together on that and I appreciate how you laid that out in a very good chronologically and and made complete sense to me and fully supportive of the job you're doing. And I think we're in good hands. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Sandy, do you want us to ask questions as we go or do you want to save the discussion until we get through the slides?
I'd like you to be patient and wait till we get to the end because there's a lot that will stimulate questions as we go through these slides and we don't have a lot of time tonight. Um, and furthermore, I may not even know the answers to your questions because we're still learning what all these rules mean. So, um, I'm gonna use.
It's gonna be hard for us to be patient, but we'll do our best.
Um, I will, of course, honor your your direction, man, as we go through. So these slides I adapted from a version provided by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So, um, in the interest of expediency, there are no Springfield photos. So, um, uh, Department of Land Conservation and Development undertook a rulemaking process in response to Governor Brown's Executive Order 2004. That executive order directed state agencies to take actions to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions and mitigate the impacts of climate change while also centering the needs of Oregon's most vulnerable communities. The Land Conservation and Development Commission adopted permanent rules in July that are very broad and complex. They cover a range of land use and transportation planning topics. There are multiple cross-references within the rules and many of the rules are prescriptive in nature. Christina Kraus is our local expert. Um, so I have a broad understanding of the rules, but I'm far from having a complete understanding um, of them or their applicability in Springfield. And so Christina may be able to, I've given her permission to jump in, um, as we go through this presentation to correct or, um, expand on anything that I say. Next slide. So the legislature passed targets in 2007 and 2010 based on a baseline of 1990 greenhouse gas emissions. So the state's adopted goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions from light duty vehicles is to reduce that by 75% from the 1990 levels by 2020, by 2050. So as you can see from this graph, we are still exceeding those 1990 levels. So that's why Governor Brown passed the executive order, um, to uh, help meet these targets. So the Department of Land Conservation and Development's rulemaking efforts are focused on reducing greenhouse gas in the transportation arena. So a desired outcome of the rulemaking effort is to dramatically reduce the vehicle miles traveled, particularly those by single occupant vehicles. Next. So the state developed a transportation strategy in 2018 in which, um, at that point, 38% of the greenhouse gases from transportation, um, came from trans, sorry, 38% of greenhouse gas emissions came from the transportation sector and that's again based on that 1990 um, assessment. So in order to reduce greenhouse gas in the transportation sector, there need to be changes to pricing, fuel and vehicle technology, transportation options, and then the system and operations. So currently, we're on track to only reduce by 20% um, by 2050. So in order to, uh, increase, based on the scenario plan type of approach, we need to look at improving transportation options and affect our system and operations. And the legislature has established a target for Eugene Springfield of a 30% reduction by 2050.
Next. That's actually DLCD that established that 30% as a result of the state legislature's direction to figure out a number.
Thank you.
They did that back in 2015.
That's why she's here. All right, so in order to affect these, um, the transportation system, we need to look at, um, increasing density, bringing land uses close together, improving transit and making it easier to bicycle and walk. And so that helps to reduce the use of single occupant vehicles and reduces the vehicle miles traveled. Next. So now I'm gonna go through various aspects of the rules and I'm going to do them in a general order of which ones affect us first. So the first area is parking management. So the first two bullets on this slide go into effect on December 31st of this year. Meaning that Springfield will no longer be able to require onsite parking for new development within half of mile of a frequent transit line. So in our case, frequent transit includes MX and Route 11 down Main Street. Also, in that second bullet, you can see the types of uses even outside of that area for which we will not be able to require onsite parking. So then the next level, um, is to go to that third bullet, then we will have a choice um, how to proceed after December. And that is option one, where we repeal all parking mandates, meaning that the city will not require any onsite parking for new development. Or we can take option two there, which is a multifaceted approach to parking management. Um, and that would apply to limited areas and limited uses for which we could still potentially require onsite parking. So council is scheduled for a work session on parking on October 10th. And we have hired a part-time, um, support of Sophie McKinley, who is, um, helping us, um, prepare for that work session. Next. Second aspect, um, of the rules is to address electric vehicle charging. As of July 1st, 2022, the state building code, um, which is not shown up here, but according to the state building code, 20% of parking spaces for commercial buildings and buildings with five or more units must be ready for electrical vehicle charging, meaning that the conduit is in place. So now with these rules, we have to increase beyond 20%. We have to go up to 40% of the parking spaces for buildings with five or more dwelling units. Next. Establishing climate-friendly areas. So Springfield must identify and adopt one or more climate-friendly areas that would allow high levels of housing and jobs. These climate-friendly areas would be incorporated as plan designations in Springfield's comprehensive plan map. They would also require corresponding changes to the zoning maps and land use regulations to implement the requirements. These climate-friendly areas must be high density, allowing residential units of 25 units per net acre. It would allow a mix of land uses, housing, commercial and employment. They would limit auto-centric uses. And then they would require investments and multimodal infrastructure to support walking, biking and transit. The size of these climate-friendly areas is based on what is needed to accommodate 30% of future housing needs. And those future housing needs are based on our adopted housing needs analysis, which projects a population within Springfield's urban growth boundary of 81,600 or so by 2030. So the climate-friendly area needs to be sized to accommodate 24,500 of our residents. So once we've identified potential areas for these climate-friendly areas, we must analyze the potential for displacement of members of state and federally protected classes. Scenario planning. A scenario plan looks at land use and transportation inputs and runs a model to see how they affect greenhouse gases from light vehicles. So that some of these inputs are transportation facilities, alternative future land use patterns and policies. So the scenario plan must show that will reach the state's greenhouse gas reduction target and address historical inequities. In 2015, the Central Lane Metropolitan Planning Organization undertook a scenario, undertook scenario planning on a voluntary basis to meet the 30% target for reduction of greenhouse gas. And that scenario plan focused on the transportation system. We must adopt the scenario plan and then also adopt amendments that would be consistent with that scenario plan in our comprehensive plan, transportation plan, land use regulations. Next. So transportation planning. There are multiple aspects to the rules that affect transportation planning. So first of all, modeling. So currently, when we run a transportation model, we look at how many trips are generated by the land use type. And we use the ITE manual, Institute of Transportation Engineers manual to tell us what those trips are by each land use. But instead of using that as the basis for the model, we will instead need to look at vehicle miles traveled per capita on a per-person basis and model that. And we don't really know how we would do that. Um, we will need to, even though we have recently made amendments to our development code to implement Springfield's transportation system plan. So we did a lot of work in terms of onsite parking requirements, looking at multimodal aspects, bicycle parking and such. Um, we'll need to relook at those to see what changes will be required. Um, to see what we need to do to fully comply with the standards for compact pedestrian-friendly and mixed-use development. Um, we will need to plan for connected network for greenways and protected bikeways on major transportation corridors. And there will will be required to focus on priority transit corridors with investments to improve travel time, improve access to bus stops and promote compact mixed-use development patterns near the bus stops and bus stations. The rules require that we prioritize projects that reduce greenhouse gas. Pedestrian, bicycle and transit projects will be given a relatively high level of priority. We will be required to have a financially constrained list of planned projects. So Springfield will be prevented from constructing projects that are not on the financially constrained list with very few exceptions. And that financially constrained list is based on what we anticipate to be the revenues over the planning period on which we can base those projects. So instead of using our current motor vehicle congestion performance standard, we will be required to develop new performance standards that we will use when planning for or reviewing the impact of development on transportation facilities. And as I alluded to earlier, we will need to relook at bicycle parking to ensure we are meeting state requirements for covered parking, shared bicycles, large bicycles and other small-scale mobility devices. Finally, the big ticket item is enhanced review of already adopted projects. So any projects that are already in our transportation system plan that increase capacity will need that enhanced review to remain in our transportation system plan. Next. So finally, um, the last aspect is to engage underserved communities and look at equity analyses. So the rules direct how the city will engage the public and specifically these underserved communities. There will be an equity analysis for different components of the rules. And that equity equity analysis will identify potentially um, inequitable impacts or burdens of various actions taken and demonstrate improved outcomes for the underserved. So finally, the timeline. So implementation of these rules necessitates additional staffing and will require near-exclusive dedication of comprehensive planning resources with major support from the city attorney's office. This work is in addition to the housing capacity analysis that the state requires Springfield to adopt by the end of 2025 and the housing production strategy that must be adopted by the end of 2026. So this presentation is in. So this presentation is intended to expose council to a broad overview of the rules with many more work sessions and public hearings to come over the next five years. Addressing climate change and promoting equity is important work. Staff supports the goals of creating more climate-friendly and equitable communities, but there are issues with the rules themselves, the costs involved, and the aggressive, unrealistic timelines. In the time left this evening, Christine and I can take questions, and we will be back with opportunities for more discussion as we get into this work and better understand what is required by these rules.
All right. Thank you for that, and I'm sure this will be therapeutic for everybody up here. Joe?
So could you provide a list of the, all these items that the state is going to pay for? Or is it easier to provide a list of what they're not paying for?
So I can start.
I mean, the, all these things you're talking about cost, every single one of them costs money.
That's right.
And so is this basically completely an unfunded?
There is some funding.
About what percent?
Certainly nothing compared to what we actually need.
Ten percent funding, five percent?
It's less than five, I would say.
These rules are so incredibly detailed.
Yes.
And it's not clear what a lot of the parts of the rules mean, that it's unclear, I think, how much it's actually going to cost. And so the funding that's been allocated is a very small amount in terms of all of the transportation planning from ODOT that will be limited to paying for consultants to kind of likely to develop the vehicle miles traveled per capita modeling that we'll need to use, but that doesn't currently exist as a engineering analysis or concept, like there's no mechanism to do that analysis right now. So I'll have to create new engineering techniques to model that on a local basis as opposed to a regional basis, which is currently what the models do. And then also, the LCD has allocated some funding to do the initial outreach and equity, very initial parts of the climate-friendly area study for certain jurisdictions. And I think that is what exists as of today. They did not put enough in their request, the LCD's request to the governor for the budget, they did not increase that request to capture what the city is forecasted it might cost over the next biennium, and this will be out for multiple biennia.
I see two big things as LCDC is operating way out of their wheelhouse. And secondly, who's paying for the part-time employee and where's that money coming from?
So because we have staff vacancies, we're paying for her with the vacancy that we have. The additional staffing that we're looking to add is with the ARPA funding. So the American.
Right.
Yeah.
The coronavirus funds have, are paying for two additional staff.
Which is finite funds? And that's going to end, and this supposed to go for how many years?
Well, the timeline that you saw had about five years. The coronavirus money ends before that.
To me, is such a total waste of money. It's, I just, I can't even put my arms around. It's just ridiculous. Not you, but I mean, just come in the city. Here we are trying to figure this out, and it's going to cost us a ton of monies. We're already hiring people to figure out how to respond to this when I don't believe we should have to respond to this because we shouldn't be forced to be put in this position.
So I've got two quick comments, and then we'll go, we'll go on to other folks. My read of the State Department is that they don't believe that the, the numbers of the state, that the cities are putting forward to do this work. And that's the, that, that's a substantial disconnect, right? Because there's not even a drop in the, a drop in the bucket, if you will. And the other question I wanted to ask while we're still on financing is, do we have any, like, it's not in the packet. Do we have any idea what the run rate cost of this is?
But the what?
The run rate, the, you know, the annual maintenance cost. It looked like the staff was settling around in the half a million dollar range is what we would expect after the first, you know, ten million dollars of it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Those costs are hard to estimate because we don't, you know, there's going to be increased, whichever parking route, for example, you take, there's increased cost depending on the path it's chosen, and it's hard to estimate those because it's hard to estimate how much of the public will respond to lack of parking by taking more transit versus parking and blocking fire accesses. So some of that is dependent on behavior that we just don't know how to model. And then there's also going to be a lot more complexity in planning, and we're unsure, you know, without a precedent, it's hard to forecast. So those are estimates, but we tried to be basing those on similar projects the cities undertaken in the past and the cost of those projects.
Perfect. Corey?
Thank you.
You're, now it's time for your seventeen questions.
I really just have one clarifying question and then some opinions. Some things to say out loud. So, um, on your, like, attachment three, where it says that the, to establish the climate-friendly areas, that accommodating thirty percent of housing needs, is that overall, so we could have like three different climate-friendly areas, as long as we get to that thirty percent, it's not just like thirty percent for each one? Okay, thank you. Okay. So, um, a couple of things. One, like all of us, like, yes, like, yes, we need to reduce greenhouse gases. Yes, we also need livable communities. Also, some of, and I, yes, for electric vehicles, and also, you know, this, this intense sort of rev up, no pun intended, or maybe pun intended, to electric vehicles is going to leave a lot of people out. So that's not necessarily an equitable approach at all. It's kind of like we're widening the, the divide of like, who's going to use public transportation? How long is it going to take to get the infrastructure for that public transportation? Who's going to be able to buy electric vehicles and plug in, and their lives are going to be minimally impacted? So I just want to call that out, and I would love somebody from this, that did this work to come and explain that to me, how that's an equitable thing. The other thing that's not in here at all, that I've been thinking about a lot, is that when, when, and I am all for improving, increasing density and livable communities, and what we also have to realize is that we have built a service delivery in terms of our fire and life safety, in terms of our, our first responders, in terms of our police department for the city that we have. So as we increase density, that's going to mean that that service delivery is going to look very different. And so that could mean, you know, where are our fire departments? How do we dispatch? How do we respond? And so I think that we just all need to be really aware of that. So that's not even in this, in terms of like, how are, how are we going to do the things that we do as a municipality, and how are we going to need to adjust that in order to make it work in this environment? And I'm also thinking about, you know, our school districts and just the, the shit, the very quick shift that we would need to make in terms of how, how we're getting kids to school, how we're getting people to places. And like I said, like, I think we all have said, yes, we want to do better, and we need to do better in a way that works for Springfield, and we need to keep in mind all of these things that are not even in here, that are also going to mean a major shift in how we do the work. So I said, I mostly just had opinions.
Leonard, and then we'll get to Damian.
Um, so in, in addition to the parking mandates, I'm, I'm counting land use enforcement and the EV charging stations. Are those the costs that are sort of involved?
I mean, as well as the transportation, I mean, the big-ticket item, as I said before, was doing enhanced review for already adopted projects in our transportation system plan.
I, I get what I'm leading up to is, are there projections about the cost versus the revenue that's going to be generated over the next seven years?
We have not attempted to look at revenue generation.
Okay, but, but you did mention it during your presentation. Re- revenue being created as a result of this program.
I don't remember mentioning that, but maybe I did.
I don't think there's any revenue that would be generated, except potentially if the city opted into enhanced parking enforcement, there may be parking permits. But so far, our one experience with a program, it does not pay for itself. So the costs exceed any revenue, and that was factored into the budget estimates around parking.
Well, depending on how we modify our land use, it could potentially generate more, more property tax, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So my, my, my question is, I mean, actually, I guess I'm going to move into opinions like Councilor Rodley. So I think the average resident of Springfield would agree that we need to reduce greenhouse gases, at least in principle. And my question is, if we are not going to adopt this program, tick tock. I mean, what is the program going to be? I mean, or is there something that we're going to be able to implement between now and twenty twenty-nine that's going to be productive?
Go ahead, Christina.
And that's a great comment, and that's really the, that is the intent of the, you know, unfortunately, we've gotten to litigation, but that was the reason that Springfield staff were so engaged in the climate-friendly and equitable rulemaking process on the rulemaking advisory committee, was to try to make sure that before the rules got adopted, they would include provisions that would allow us to implement the rules and include requirements or means and flexibility so that what Springfield ended up doing would result in climate-friendly benefits. And the concern that, you know, we have in many other cities in Oregon and metropolitan areas have is that the rules rigidity means we will be forced to put in place solutions that don't solve the climate problems in Springfield, or don't solve the equity problems in Springfield. So we'll be required to undergo planning, in some cases to replan projects we've already undertaken and use staff time to do that as opposed to the types of projects that actually would move the needle for Springfield. So the real goal in, in, you know, sort of following up in litigation is not to not do anything to address climate, it's to get the department back to the table to help work and as partners with, with cities like Springfield, to figure out the pieces of these rules that would work for cities and then provide more flexibility with a metrics-based sort of outcomes approach rather than dictating the very, very detailed requirements of what has to be in codes, you know, and that level of detail that's in there.
So is one of our goals to make the greenhouse guidelines more binding as opposed to the methodology?
The greenhouse gas emissions targets in these rules are binding, so I don't know that there's anything more binding that could be added to them.
I, I heard targets.
The, right, the targets are binding targets as proposed in these rules. So there's not, I'm not sure that there's a way for these rules to become more binding.
What happens? Do we face fines?
Um, for the current rules, if the greenhouse gas targets aren't satisfactory to the determination of the agency, the agency could undertake an enforcement action, which would be a compliance order. They could unacknowledge our transportation system plan according to their rules, which would have huge, resound, you know, sort of spillover effects. And ultimately, noncompliance with these rules could risk loss of a lot of state and federal funding that we currently get for safety improvements, for all kinds of, of work in the community.
So, thank you.
So Leonard and I, and I think two ways to sort of think about it, right? Like, my view on this is really what we want to do is get to, we, for twenty years, we made, we've worked with the community to identify projects and policies that would get us towards a greenhouse gas reduction. And in a lot of places, what we're looking for is support to be able to do that without the state sort of making, making it so that we have to redo all of that work. And I'll give you everybody's favorite example, the Forty Second Street levy, right? That, you know, arguably, that's a climate mitigation project, and that, you know, if we work on this work plan, then we're taking away from the time and energy that it would take to protect, you know, Hall of North Springfield, you know, and Ward Four from, you know, from climate mitigate, you know, from potential floods, right?
Yeah, it's mostly a disaster management program, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, but like, the, the way I, I guess I think about it is, in our case, right, I would ultimately want us to have the ability to say what we want to do, and then, and get support to do that, and then acknowledge that, you know, other cities may want to do other things, and they should be able to put forward their priorities. So Damian?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this is kind of a question, not necessarily. I mean, I, I think in a lot of presentations, we've seen a lot of national stats are used in why this has been somewhat vocalized to Springfield, you know. We hear, you know, underserved communities, and we hear equity, and so over time, I'm just curious, like, what does that mean? Because that's going to look different in certain parts of Springfield versus others, as well as throughout the state. And so I ask that we find a definition that fits the city of Springfield specifically versus using some national level data, which I'm not saying that that's been done, but I've just seen it done way too much where we focus on, you know, big words, and we talk, you know, underserved and equity, but like, that definition's going to look completely different based on the city. And so I just ask that we keep that in mind as we, whether we do this or not. Yeah.
All right. Steve?
I, I became aware of this over a year ago. Some memo from, came out of the governor's office. I thought, wow, where's this coming in? What's this about? And it caught on fire and went through, the LCD mandated all these rules, and I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the goal, by the way, but they're, they're using a hammer to make us do the job. We don't have the money. There's no, there's no funding for it whatsoever. And what I've been telling people, as they talk to me as a counselor, is, is we're not going to be expanding the urban growth boundary, period. I know that's never going to happen. We're going to have to infill, we're going to have to build up, we're going to have to improve our infrastructure to, to support those people. And then, of course, our transportation, to cut down on the greenhouse effect from that, as well as, as our building structures, you know. There's just a lot of things we have to do, and this mandates, it, it's not all at once, but I think it's over a period of time, we're going to have to do all of those. And it's going to be, it's going to be painful. And again, we don't have the money. Where, how, how, how are we going to do that?
All right. Well, I, I, I think I noted that this was going to be a little bit therapeutic when, when we started going through. And this is our first opportunity to really say how, like, what a big impact from a financial perspective this is, right? So there's two things that really jump out to me. One of them is to just share amount of cost associated that, for dollars that we don't have, you know, across, you know, to come up with ten million dollars when we have forty-five, maybe forty-seven million dollars in our, in our general fund budget is ridiculous. The other piece is an acknowledgement of kind of the complexity that we all face around transportation projects, right? The public right now is asking that we listen to them and respond to them a little bit more. And what we've done as a state is really created a system where, where we're basically having to go out there and ignore what the public's actually telling us. And I think it's worth noting that, you know, that we need to be responding and to what our community needs are. And like, I, I think climate change is real, and, and I think we have policies and we've done work, and this community has a view on how it wants to attract, deal with it. But it really needs to be around this community's needs, not a one-size-fits-all program across the entire state. So I'm hoping in, in these, in all these discussions, what we can end up with is just everybody kind of taking a deep breath and getting back to the table and going, okay, what would work, instead of creating something that's just going to burn money and be a boon for consultants. No offense to any consultants out there. All right. Any other questions before? Before we let you go? Thank you for the, uh?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And I appreciate everyone sort of airing their opinions and talking about how, how do we, how do we create some space, which is, of course, the purpose of litigation? How do we create some space to figure out what's going to be the best solution here? And I think one of the things that we've already leaned into is thinking about, you know, sort of livable communities, and what does that look like? And, you know, to be able to do that. And when I think about it, when I look at the slide, I'm like, I can see different pockets of Springfield that would be great for that. And we've been talking about that for a few years. Like, how do we, how do we build out in Mohawk? How do we build out here? How do we do that? But it's going to take more than three years to get there, and it's going to take some partnerships, and it's going to just, it's just going to take some time. So I appreciate this, like, okay, how do we get back to the table, and how do we create some space to do that, to get there?
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. I know we're going to get a ton more information about this, and we'll have to keep the conversation going. We have CETA at seven o'clock, I believe. Are we on a different, we are on a different meeting link. So we're going to adjourn in City Hall, and then we will reconvene on the new meeting link as, as CETA. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.